We're going to call the meeting to order, so please all rise and salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our servicemen and women, our veterans, and those that have given the ultimate sacrifice.
All right, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe.
Here.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seika.
Yeah.
Counselor Siminelli. Counselor Spatafora. He's muted. Counselor Winslow.
Here.
Council President Barbara Murphy is absent.
So, under the provisions of open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Media Arts, will be recording on this evening's meeting. I didn't get any other requests to record tonight's meeting, but just be aware that there'll be audio and video recording of tonight's meeting. So we have sort of our first order of business, but I just wanted to sort of lay it out there that we do have Counselor Spatafor that is zooming in. I know that that had been a conversation with Council President Murphy because he had some medical issues that he was dealing with, so he is zoomed in tonight's meeting. So the first order of business.
Representatives from Malden Reads will appear before the City Council to present their One City, One Book reading selection for 2023, They Called Us Enemy by George Takei. Takei.
Wonderful, and so we have Anne Dorso Rose and Dora St. Martin here representing, and so I'm gonna put your mic on, the podium on. Turn me off and let you go.
And Carol, if you could just minimize the... Yeah, off to the side there? Yeah, perfect. Oh. Sorry, hold on one second. I forgot what you want. I don't think it's screen. Sorry. I don't want to use them with books. All right, I don't know how to do it. Okay, never mind. Go back to it. Okay. Hi. Hello, is this... Hello, members of the Malden City Council. I'm Anne Dorso Rose from UMA, Urban Media Arts, and I'm here with Dora St. Martin, the Director of the Malden Public Library, and we're here this evening to share with you the details of the 2023 Malden Reads One City, One Book program. I want to recognize that Jody Zalk, who is a co-facilitator for this program since its inception, could not be here this evening because she's traveling, and this is her first time not being present for this presentation, but she continues to be a leading presence and a leading force in the program. First of all, we want to say thank you for allowing us the time to make this presentation every year and for the support of many of you as individuals and all of you as a whole as representatives of the city of Malden that has been giving us so much support and shown so much enthusiasm for this program. Malden Reads is a community reading program that seeks to promote literacy, a love of reading, and most of all, to build a more connected community here in the city of Malden. Each year, we choose one main book and then companion books for younger readers, and we encourage the community to read the book appropriate to their age level. Then we offer programming, which include community events, projects, activities, and collaborative initiatives, all in some way related to the themes of the book. We aim to be inclusive of our community so that there is an entry point somewhere each year for each person in our community to participate. There are community reading programs or one-book programs that exist throughout the country, but to our knowledge, gleaned particularly when we were part of the National Endowment for the Arts Big Read Program in 2020, Malden has one of the most consistent, expansive, inclusive, and quality programs that exists, and that is something that we, as a community, should all feel proud of. We think the reason for that has a lot to do with the way that we have been structured since our inception in 2011. This program is organized by a dynamic and independent group of community volunteers that are not all pictured there, and anchored and supported by two well-established organizations here in Malden, the Malden Public Library, which of course is all about books, reading, and serving the community, and UMA, Urban Media Arts, which is all about building community through media in all its forms, amplifying the voice of the community, and engaging with ideas, arts, culture, and civic involvement. Like everyone else, we had to pivot during the worst years of COVID, but we are proud of how vibrant and dynamic our program remained during those years, and we're excited to now be back in 2023, our 13th year, with many in-person and hybrid events and programs to offer. So now, I'm gonna turn this over to... It's okay. Oh, just put it over there. I was worried. I'm gonna turn over to Dora, and she's gonna talk about this year's book.
Wonderful. Hi, I'm Dora St. Martin, the Director now for almost 10 years of the Malden Public Library. Amazing, it's gone by. So I'm here to introduce to the entire community the wonderful book They Called Us Enemy by George Takei of activist and Star Trek fame. We're very excited to have the book. I'm gonna tell you just a little quick about the book. The 2023 book selection is They Called Us Enemy. It's a graphic memoir by actor and activist and, again, former Star Trek star George Takei. The graphic novel chronicles George's experience living in a Japanese-American internment camp as a child during World War II. Takei said he wrote They Called Us Enemy in graphic memoir format to reach a younger audience who may not be aware that Japanese-Americans were forced to live in camps during the war. "As a teen," he said, "I loved comic books and noticed that some of the messages of the comics stayed with me. I look at young people as the voters of tomorrow," he continued. "They will set the course for our country. The more detailed knowledge they have, the more likely they are to avoid the mistakes and cruel decisions that have been made in the past." The book starts when George was five. His parents, his younger brother, and infant sister were sent to the Rower Japanese-American Relocation Center in Arkansas after briefly staying in a horse stable at the Santa Ana racetrack. Takei says he still remembers his mother trying to keep her children safe and healthy under often unsanitary conditions. They Called Us Enemy is a powerful look at one man's experience while imprisoned as a child, but it invites the reader not only to better understand a sad part of our history, but also to reflect on how that history is a precursor to some current events, such as the recent Muslim ban. We will have many book discussions and community events and companion books, so I'm also going to introduce you to just two. Maldenreads.org is where the list is for all the companion books, and there are for children's, young adults, and adult companion books. So just two. One, which is going to be really lovely, is called Baseball Saved Us by Ken Mosch... I'm gonna pronounce it wrong. Ken Moschikuki and Dom Lee for illustrator. And it's a wonderful book about how, when in the camps, they needed something to look forward to, even for nine innings, and so they built a baseball field at Manzanar, and that's what this book is about, the children playing baseball. And then Write to Me, Letters from Japanese-American Children to the Librarian They Left Behind by Cynthia Grady, another wonderful companion book. This is actually based upon a true story of letters that children who were interned during World War II wrote back to the librarian in their hometown, and these are the letters. So just another wonderful book. So maldenreads.org, lots of great companion books. We'll be introducing them also at the school committee meeting. Thank you.
All right, I just wanted to give folks a glimpse inside the book because I don't know if folks have read graphic novel before. For me, it was a new experience. I didn't think I'd like it. I'm kind of a book snob, but I... But I loved it. I loved it. I thought it was great, and I really understood how the pictures really helped to tell the story. And like here, you know, Dora mentioned that they're led into the internment camp and they're staying in a horse stall, and I can't read it from here, but it says, the boy says something like, "Oh, we get to stay where the horsies are. Fun." And below that, you know, I didn't, as a child, I didn't realize, you know, the... I'm like, it's my eye test, you know? But the injustice of the situation, thank you. So I just wanted to kind of give you a peek inside of there. So now we're gonna talk about the upcoming events. First, we'll start with book discussions. We always have book discussions, so opportunity to get together with other people and discuss the book. We have over on the upper right, we're gonna have a virtual book discussion with Chris Hickey and Felicia Ryan, both from the Malden Writers Collaborative. In the center, we have the mayor preparing for his book discussion, which he does every year, and we're just so thrilled that the mayor actually reads the book every year and leads the discussion. In the upper right-hand corner, we're gonna again have a discussion at Idle Hands Brewery. So just getting together in smaller groups with discussion prompts over here and see pizza. And then in the lower right-hand corner, First Parish of Malden always engages with the book. Every year, they do a worship service and a book discussion. This year Reverend Aisha Ansan No will be leading the discussion. And the senior center always reads the book, and we provide books for them. So those are opportunities for people to be part of a discussion, but we also encourage folks to discuss the book with their family, their friends, their neighbors, their own group. So come to one of ours. It's over to... It won't have the switch to...
I'm so sorry about the echo. We'll try to step away maybe a little ways. Technology.
Yes, me and him. Okay. We good? Okay.
I'm just gonna tell you about two villains that are available, and the first one is actually tomorrow evening, so we'll help you all think about joining us, especially if you're watching from home. It is called Allegiance, and it's very exciting. It's part of a program called Broadway on Demand. If you've ever gone to one of those movie theaters and seen a Broadway show, we're gonna be able to do that, and it is actually the play Allegiance, which is based upon George Takei's life and the book. So we're excited to show that tomorrow evening at the library. Again, details are at maldenreads.org. The second film is called Cats of Marakatani, and it's a documentary that recently won a Tribeca Film Award, and it is about Jimmy Marakatani, a painter who became homeless from his trauma of being at a Japanese-American internment camp, and someone who befriends him takes him home and helps him heal, and it's really a documentary of the power of friendship and the power of art to heal us. So we're looking forward to showing that on March 15.
We're gonna do less switches in a minute, so... Okay. Sorry. It's not... All right, so we are really pleased to announce the return of our community dinners, which is something that we've done starting the second year of Malden Reads, and this is where we go to local restaurants, and the participants pay one price to get a full meal. And you don't have to have read the book to come. We'll have prompts that just talk, you know, encourage people to talk about the themes from the book, whether you've read the book or not. Again, entry points for everyone. And this year, we'll be going to Zoro Zoro Ramen and Omori Izakaya and sushi on Eastern Ave, so we're really excited about that. Okay, you're this, you're it for next... I can pop over. Okay. I'm gonna talk about some other programs. The Citizen Lyceum is coming up on May 17. This is probably going to be, Linda, our fourth lyceum?
Yeah.
Our fourth lyceum that we've had with the Mass Center for Civic Education. It's really a wonderful event. We get together, we read primary documents, and we talk about issues like the Bill of Rights, the Constitution, and this time, the loyalty question. So we'll be discussing the idea of what it means to be loyal and how it is to be questioned about your loyalty, whether it's during the Japanese-American internment, whether it's the French Canadians, it happened to them, whether it's, again, the Muslim ban. So we'll be talking about those, so we're looking forward to that program. And some other fun things, we're having a banzai demonstration. We're certainly gonna have some wonderful things about Japanese art. If you don't know, the Malden Library has a wonderful Japanese art collection, and we're going to have Hokaze, a talk about Hokaze, the artist, at the same time the MFA has their exhibit, so that's kind of nice. Oh, and, I love this one, Steve Kluger, who is a writer with the Boston Globe, or was a writer with the Boston Globe, he is going to talk about baseball, again, in the internment camps and their importance, but also, if you... He was part of a committee that restored the baseball fields at Manzanar and put a monument, a national monument there, so he's gonna talk about that experience, so looking forward to him visiting. Also, the author of Last Days of Summer, if you need another good book to read. Oh, oh, Marjorie, oh, Margie. One of, I think, this is the one, if you're gonna, well, you should go to them all, but... This is a personal perspective. We have found Margie Yamamoto. She is coming. She was interned in a Japanese-American internment camp with her parents at the age of two months, and she does a wonderful slideshow about her parents' life before the camps, during the camps, and how they endured and their life after. And she's coming. She's in her 90s. Her driver is her husband, also in his 90s, and we're very excited to have them make their way here to talk about a personal experience, so that's gonna be very special.
I think the cape. So we're also gonna be offering some hands-on creative workshops that go along with the idea that this story was told through a couple of different mediums. We'll reprise our workshop with C.D. Collins that encourages participants to write narrative stories, poetry, and even song lyrics with prompts, and then she works individually with the participants, and you share things in a class, and then everyone finishes one piece that they perform, and we're going to perform again at Porch Fest, as we did last year. We'll also offer a workshop with drawing, so folks who like to draw will come work with a young animator, Sky Malerba, and just create something, a personal event from their life, that will also find a way to share with the public through our events. And then Family Stories Through Art with artist Sharon Santillo, which is using collage to tell your family stories. So those are some other workshops we're excited to offer. We are going to be stargazing on Waits Mount. This is something we started in 2015 when we did the Martian, and shout out to Ryan O'Malley, who works with us on this event, does a cleanup, but it's a chance for folks to actually look through telescopes and see the night sky, and then we do wraparound programming, storytelling, poetry, music, children's activities at the top of Waits Mount, which is Malden's highest peak. And more. We won't go into details about a lot of family programs, kids' programs that we do. We'll talk about that more at the school committee. We also did last year a collaboration with the Friends of the Malden River, Mystic River Watershed Association, and Project Masique, and we will be reprising that next fall. So just opportunities for the community to come together and share in this book. And... Oh, you forgot one. Go ahead.
I guess I forgot one. We wanted to definitely mention March 23, Karen Wigley, the Assistant Director of Library, who is working so hard on this program. She is going to be helping the mayor lead a book discussion at the library, so that's also gonna be one we don't want to miss. And did we mention funders? Should we thank our...
Yep.
Oh, good, here they come.
So, so we didn't give you much for dates and times. Everything is at maldenreads.org, and you can go there for updates, details, and also follow us on social media. And also, if you would like to support us, you can donate, and you can see our list of donors. The community has always been very generous, and that's allowed us to do these programs. So again, we thank you for allowing us to do this presentation, and we'll take any questions that you may have, and we also have books for all of you.
Don't go too far, Dora. So I just wanted to acknowledge like Linda Zalk and Ron Cox, who are also in the audience from Malden Reads, who have... There's a whole host of people that do so much work on this, and it's great, and we have lights. I doubt there are gonna be many questions. I think it's more gonna be accolades of all the great work you're doing. So we're gonna start off with Counselor Cologne Hayes.
I'm so excited.
Oh, it's happened way too much.
Not another phone. Not tonight.
Oops. It's okay.
Thank you. I was too excited about getting my own personal book, so I didn't realize that they had called me to speak, so I just want to say thank you. I mean, every year, it just seems like it gets better and bigger. I can't even believe how long you've been doing this. I've been a part of the program in any way I could help since day one, and it just is amazing, and every time you come up with a book that is relevant and the... How much thought you put into everything is just, you know, it just shows how much you care about Malden, actually in the whole world, but bringing it here to Malden, so I just want to say thank you for everything you do. I know how hard it is to be a volunteer, year after year after year, and so I just want to thank you all for continuing what you do. It's just amazing, and we're so, so lucky to have you here in Malden. Thank you.
Thank you, and we do represent the committee. There's a large... You'd know if you were choosing a book because it's quite... The meetings are quite something.
Thank you. I too just wanted to say congrats and how special it is to have you back again. I look forward to hearing what the selection's gonna be every year. I love how varied it is every year, and I also just wanted to give another plug for the graphic memoir format. I am like you, I had a very closed mind to it, but as anybody with a child or grandchild in that elementary-middle age range knows, these are like all the rage, and you can actually dive into some pretty intense topics in that format. So I love it now, and I can't wait to go home and read this, so thank you so much.
Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you. Thank you for all of this. I always look forward to it also. It will also be my first graphic novel, so I'm really looking forward to diving into it, really immersing myself into the different pictures, which would normally be used with a lot of text to kind of explain the feeling that people were in and the environment, so I think it's a great new format for me. Looking forward to Waits Mount. Definitely, everyone, go check it out. It's a great park if you haven't been there. I don't actually know if it's the highest top mount, unfortunately. No.
Really? I was always told it was the highest.
I think technically it's Bojum Rock.
Ward six.
No, it's not Ward six.
Oh, okay, well.
So it looks like it's debatable, but I... I think it's technically Ward three in Bojum Rock, but I'm not a... Maybe it's a competition. We should have a competition. Ward three, six, and four.
I will say, it says on the plaque. It says it on the plaque. Oh, yeah, that's where I got it from.
So we'll have to get that fixed, but thank you so, thank you so much. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, I just want to thank the committee and all the volunteers for this. It's always a very joyful event and events in Malden, and it... The fact that just beyond the book and they're reading all the other different things, and I'm excited, I think more of them are on Wednesday nights, which are a little more free for the council and stuff like that, so excited that we'll be able to participate a little bit more than in the past, so just looking forward to it. Looks like a very interesting book, and having grown up in California and with many friends who were Japanese, and like my college roommate, his dad was one of the people interned, something that I only learned about in college, and to have people learn sooner about the impact is important, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald.
I don't have that much original to say, just echoing all the thanks and just appreciation, and I'm so impressed, year after year, how many types of events and how many partners Malden Reads manages to secure. It was, it's wonderful to hear that we're actually a leader in this kind of a citywide reads program, and I will get those dates on my calendar, be there, and bring my kids to as many as I can, and I will return... I checked this out from the library, so I'll return it now that I have my own copy. It's probably overdue. Thank you.
Well, and I should say, I have some extra copies of Baseball Saved Us if somebody wants to bring one home. Don't have it up for everyone.
Great. And just from Chet, you know, thank you so much. I can't believe it's been 13 years. I remember when this was sort of a concept and lots of people were involved, and really how far it has come from sort of, you know, Jody and your minds in many ways, and really has grown and encompassed so many people in the community, and it really is, you know, one community, one book, and it brings us all together. So thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anne, sorry. Before you leave, Counselor O'Malley has a question we were just discussing, so we figured we'd get it answered.
So we were wondering, is this a book for all ages, or is there a recommended age range?
I would say high school up.
High school up. High school up. Perfect.
I don't know. Dora, answer the... Dora's better answer that question.
Age range on the book, Dora?
Age range for the main book?
Yeah, I would say it's...
Ninth grade up.
Ninth grade up. But even some, you know, depending on your child, middle, kindergarten.
Mature kids?
Mature kids.
Okay.
Yeah. Because there are some difficulties. It's mostly, he does it in a joyful way, but there are some difficulties.
So we're talking about, like, you know, ninth grade up, maybe middle school for certain...
Yeah. We have a middle school graphic novel, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a middle school graphic novel, if anyone else is looking for that. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you again. All right. All right. The next order of business is... Should we give him a second to read? Okay. So the next order of business is public comment. And public comment is allowed within our council rules. Each speaker, not that we really go over this, has about two minutes to talk about a subject matter that's on the agenda tonight. So City Clerk, I believe we do have people that are on the list for public comment.
I believe we do have somebody who's signed in tonight for public comment. I also have an email submission to read into the record.
Okay. Should we read the email submission first, and then you can make your way up to the podium to do your public comment? Mic is not on.
This comes from Jessica Lee of 60 Plainfield Avenue. I am writing this in support of Resolve 88-22, that it is the sense of the City Council that they wish to invite the Malden High School Civics Club to appear to provide an update on Paper 138-22, Malden Youth Civics Council. The Malden Youth Civics Council has been working diligently alongside Karen Cologne Hayes for months to gain support for a youth board in Malden. They've achieved a good understanding of the resolve and have thereafter created a petition and met with Counselor Winslow and the mayor to seek their thoughts. From all this, they have gathered opinions that would be effective to share. It would be great for them to appear before the City Council and give their opinions about the resolve. I am asking for the council to vote favorably on this resolve and allow the civics club to appear before the City Council. Thank you. And again, Jessica Lee, 60 Plainfield Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so just, if you just please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Aria Shaw. I'm from 45 Lumi Street, Apartment 104. Oh, sure. Should I repeat that? My name is Aria Shaw from 45 Lumi Street, Apartment 104. Today, we are from the Malden Youth Civics Club. My name is Aria Shaw. This is Agnir Singh. And this is Nick Dugan. We have been in great support of the formation of the Malden Youth Council Advisory Committee. Establishing a Malden Youth Council Advisory Committee gives youth the chance to participate in local government and represent the youth's voice, wants, needs, and perspective. The youth are severely underrepresented in government, and we believe that it is imperative for the growth of the community to increase their involvement and have their opinions represented, expressing their way, their opinions on city politics. We've been working with Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes diligently to make significant changes to the resolve. The civics club has received opinions of numerous people ranging from city councilors to other youth members, as well as existing committees in towns like Wakefield, all in order to gain feedback and further enhance the resolution. We believe that it is necessary for us to be able to go before the City Council to give a detailed presentation in under 10 minutes regarding what our change to resolve proposes for the youth board and the detailed changes we have made, as well as our reasons for why we feel so strongly in supporting the formation for the youth board. We are asking for the council to vote favorably upon Resolve 88-22 and allow the civics council to represent themselves before the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Guess he's speaking for the crowd. Excellent job. Thank you so much. All right, the next order of business. Oh, I'm sorry. Nope. Yes, we can take that 88-23, the resolve. Can you read that, Madam Clerk?
Paper 88-23, Resolve, that it is the sense of the City Council that they wish to invite the Malden High School Civics Club to appear to provide an update on Paper 138-22, Malden Youth Council, sponsor Karen Cologne Hayes.
Counselor Cologne Hayes for the resolve.
Thank you. I was not... Thank you very much to Counselor Winslow for bringing this up so that our youth can hear some of the discussion. So basically, we had come before the council last year, and we were trying to have a resolve for a youth council. And at that time, that motion failed because... Sorry, got distracted. That motion failed, and they had some questions. Some city councilors thought it might have been too much work, or there was too many committees at the time. So basically, I had been meeting with the Malden Civics Club, and they have been amazing. And they did a lot of homework, and they've tried to address the questions that came up during that meeting, setting up meetings with other cities and really working hard. So I'd ask that you all support this resolve so that they can come and give a presentation to the rest of us on what they've been working on. And hopefully, we can pass and make, based on what they have found, to be something that we could work with, and that gets passed favorably as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Linehan.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Counselor Cologne Hayes for putting in the work as one of the original sponsors on the paper that I know we had a lot of different concerns and deep discussion around. I appreciate that you've taken the time and that the civics club has given you some of their time as well. I know that there's been an open invitation for councilors to come meet, and it can be hard during the workday, but that I do think there's... It's evident that a lot of work has gone into this to try to fine tune it, do research into what other communities do, and really get us to the point where we can be all comfortable moving forward and feel like we have a productive path. And I just think, you know, giving our youth a voice. I can't really think of a reason why we wouldn't want to support this particular resolve. I would always love to hear from our youth, but I just wanted to explicitly thank you for all the work that you've done, because I know you've really been trying to get this to a point where we can bring it back and have a discussion and move it forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you. If possible, I would love to be added as a co-sponsor to invite the youth to give this presentation. I think that they spoke eloquently tonight. They also, I believe, committed to keeping it to a pretty short presentation, being respectful of our time as well as the community's time. I think it shows that they're really putting in the effort. You know, I, as the de facto representative of the youth in our community... You know, I... It is... I find it surprising that I am the youngest still. You know, I was elected almost eight years ago. Not the youngest ever, but the youngest at the time. And still, to this day, eight years later, the youngest. I think that's unusual, right? There should be more youth involved generally in the community, but also up here on the dais. Representation matters, and I think representation of the youth is important. And hopefully, we'll see either y'all or some of your friends and fellow students up here at some point soon. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I had the opportunity to meet with the youth council and excited that they really have this interest in... Looking forward to hear what their proposal is. Thank you.
Thank you. Not quite the youngest, but Counselor McDonald.
Let the record reflect that both Counselor O'Malley and I are in our upper 30s at this point. So that's a relative distinction. But I suppose you will always have a couple of months on me, Ryan. That doesn't change. I just wanted to say thank you all for being here and for speaking. And, you know, I have had it on my calendar to also make it to a Malden Youth Civics Club meeting to particularly talk about the work we're ramping up with climate action, that we're going to be launching some community engagement around Earth Day. And so really want to make sure y'all are involved in that. So thank you for your hard work. And I'd also like to be added as a co-sponsor to the resolve if I can. Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes, for your work in shepherding us to this point. And I look forward to hearing what the updated proposal is as another original sponsor of the... Or co-sponsor of that original paper. Thank you.
Thank you. And so on Counselor Cologne Hayes's motion to pass the resolve, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, all those in favor? Any opposed? Nope. Passed unanimously. So we look forward to figuring out a schedule and having you back and hearing your presentation. Yeah, roll call. Yep. We're having a little technical difficulty with Zoom, but as we... Oh, hang on. Counselor Spatterford, can you hear us? All right, so why don't we move on, at least with... Do the approval of minutes. So it's the next order of business is the...
Paper... Approval of Minutes, Paper 64-23, minutes for the meeting of February 14th, 2023, and Paper 65-23, minutes for the meeting of February 21st, 2023.
So I have, and Counselor Winslow's... Hang on. Do you have a question? Okay. On Counselor Winslow's motion to approve the minutes of February 14th and February 21st, seconded by Counselor Seika, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right. Next order of business.
Paper 66-23, Petition, Amusement Machines, Provo Corp., DBA, Patrick's and Franny's, 36-40 Lebanon Street, Malden, three machines renewal. Paper 67-23, Petition, Livery Limolounge, Inc., 56, Linden Avenue, Number 4, one vehicle, new. Paper 68-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, Alan Ambrose, 21 Ripley Street, Malden, new. Paper 69-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, Ryan Bragg, 27 Slaton Way, Unit 3, Roxbury, new. Paper 70-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, Louis Kalula, 235 Revere Street, Apartment 503, Revere, new. Paper 71-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, William Cook, 19 Talbot Street, Apartment 614, Sawgus, renewal. Petition 72-23, Taxi Driver, Clark Hyten, 476 Shirley Street, Number 3, Winthrop, new. Paper 73-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, Christopher Jackson, 24 Surfside Road, Number 6, Lynn, renewal. Paper 74-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, Dominique Long, 120 Salem Street, new. Paper 75-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, Rita Narhbleid, 13 School Street, Everett, new. Paper 76-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, Michael Repiglia, 9 Richardson Street, Malden, Mass, renewal. Paper 77-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, William Street, 117 Medford Street, Number 1, renewal. Paper 78-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, Valentine Chle, 30 Washington Street, Apartment 508, Brighton, renewal. Paper 79-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, Carlos Vargas, 290 Michouam Road, Apartment 2039, Woburn, renewal. Paper 80-23, Petition, Taxi Driver, John Walters, 5 Hancock Street, Apartment Number 11, Everett, new.
On Counselor Seika's motion to refer the petitions to license, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, all those in favor? The papers have been referred, petitions. And we have Mr... We're going to take a five-minute recess so we can figure out our technical issues. Counsel, can you hear?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we've straightened out our technical issues, so we're going to move on with the agenda. So, next order of business.
Paper eighty-one dash twenty-three, be adhered by or ordained by the City Council of the City of Malden that the code of the City of Malden be amended by adding Title Two, Chapter Sixteen, Section one five zero, Police Community Advisory Council.
Yes, so can you read the communication? Oh, sorry. Can you also read the communication from the mayor?
Dear members of the City Council, I am writing in support of proposed City Ordinance two point sixteen point one five zero, establishing a Police Community Advisory Council. This proposal comes out of the work accomplished by the advisory group on Obama's pledge, which worked to review Malden's use of force policy. As you may recall, in June of two thousand and twenty, as a part of Unite Malden two thousand and twenty, we answered the Obama Foundation's call to action and signed a pledge to work with the Malden Police Department and the community to review Malden's use of force policy. An advisory group for Obama's pledge, or AOGP, was formed, made up of community members who leveraged their experiences and backgrounds to provide input on the current policy. They have worked tirelessly over the last few years to review, research, provide insight, and identify areas of improvement specifically through the lens of community members. Their recommendations include the formation of the Police Community Advisory Council. The proposed ordinance establishes the PCAC and sets forth its mission and responsibilities. The aim is to promote public awareness and community engagement on the city's police services, programs, and general public safety issues. The PCAC will also help to facilitate open dialogue and assist the Malden Police Department in their public safety mission. I want to thank this opportunity, I want to take this opportunity to thank the members of the AGOP, which include Jay Binnaman, Kelly Cullum, Isabelle Eddy, Ben Hartzell, Karen Cologne Hayes, now City Councilor-at-Large, Darren Josie, Toon Lawrence, Carrie McDonald, now City Councilor-at-Large, Usain Monk, Erga Perret, Tommy Lee Rock, Baritu Siege, also working with the group, or City Councilors Amanda Linehan and Stephen Winslow, former City Councilor Neil Anderson, and Maria Louise from my office. Community input was critical to this process, and their time and commitment to this work is sincerely appreciated. Again, I support this proposal and look forward to working with you, the proposed PCAC, and Police Chief Glenn Cronin, to ensure more transparent and equitable public safety policies in Malden. Sincerely, Gary Christensen, Mayor of Malden.
Thank you, Clerk. And so now Counselor McDonald for the paper.
Thank you all. Yeah, I'm very proud to file this paper with cosponsors on this last day of Black History Month, you know, a little while from when this process that the mayor initiated reviewing police use of force policies and really kicking off some much broader public dialogue. He didn't mention this in the letter, but through the AGOP group, we surveyed over thirteen hundred Malden residents on their thoughts about the potential recommendations. So you can read those recommendations online, and this was one of the recommendations from the group, is to create this kind of a venue for ongoing dialogue about public safety, about policing, about community concerns. So I just want to say a couple of words about this, and I think we'll refer it to committee for further discussion. Malden joins a number of other cities in the Commonwealth and across the country that have developed or are developing groups like this. We were particularly looking at Framingham and Brookline, which have recently done groups like this. This is different from the types of civilian oversight boards that some police departments have, which are really investigative and are there to deal with complaints about use of force. In two thousand and twenty, the state of Massachusetts established the statewide Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, whose job it is to do just that, to certify armed officers and to investigate complaints. And so that's their job. And this group would be instead to follow through on a number of the recommendations relating to data that the police department has, that when it's published annually is a forum to discuss it. It's a forum to talk about policy and strategies and how the work of the police department intersects with other public safety groups, like our addiction recovery specialists and Elliott Community Services and so on. So I'm really excited to have the mayor's support. We did, of course, share the draft also with the police chief, who shared it with his captains, gave us some feedback. He's supportive as well, and I'm sure we'll talk to him through this process as a positive way to engage our diverse community. And, you know, in talking with Chief Cronin, he really acknowledged what I think is true, which is that people in our community, based on their background, based on the color of their skin, based on the country they come from, have had a huge range of experiences with policing and police officers, positive, negative, everything in between. And so having a predictable, you know, clear public venue to talk about the issues that are really critical for public safety in our community is, I think, a really important investment in Malden and in our civic life. So I, I am just really excited to be able to help move this forward and look forward to working with you all to secure strong support for this moving forward. So I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a number of lights. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I really want to thank Counselor McDonald and all the others on the AGOP committee. It's been a long process. I mean, if we call, it's really started with the unfortunate death, death of George Floyd and all the urgency of that. It's been a long time coming to the point where we have an ordinance. And I think in some ways, you know, the patience and persistence is actually, I think, resulting in a very good and improved thing, that I was always concerned that, I did not think we really had the capacity to have a kind of an investigatory committee. So this committee really, I think, fits what really makes sense of making sure we have that interaction between the community and the police. And I think that it's a great proposal, and it's been a long time coming. It's been, the committee's work, I really appreciate it. It's through COVID and everything. I give also credit to Maria Louise for helping to hold it all together in some late Sunday afternoons and stuff like that. Over the course of time, it's been a very long thing coming, but a lot of thoughtful insights, and appreciate all the work of the committee to get it this far, and looking forward to moving it forward when it comes to the time. Great.
Thank you. Counselor Linehan.
Thank you. I don't want to be too redundant, but a lot of what Counselor Winslow said is very much how I was feeling, too. This was a long effort. There were a lot of late Sunday night meetings. There were a lot of summer meetings. There were literal, people had babies that didn't exist at the beginning of this process that were born through the, you know, this has been a journey, and it, I was honored to take part, but don't consider myself to have done anywhere close to the lion's share of the work on this. This was a tremendous community effort, and I really want to commend Counselor McDonald for really doing one of the hardest parts, which is corralling it all together at the end, after people have said a lot of things and thrown it out there, and it just needs to get finalized into something that we can actually bring to discussion. So, again, not to be too redundant, but just, this is, this has really been a long road and a lot of work, and I think it's better for that. And I am really looking forward to the discussion and getting this into a place where we can hopefully take action on it, would really feel great after so many years of work. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you. Thank you to the main sponsors and the cosponsors for this. I would love to be added, you know, I think the fact that Chief Cronin is in support of this is really showing that the leadership of our police department is, is looking towards the future and understands that, you know, transparency and community trust is essential. So I do appreciate that. You know, even, even, you know, very recently, for the first time in close to a decade, if not more than a decade, now police logs are being provided to the public and are made available. I think additional data so that people understand what's going on, have that transparency is really important. One thing I know for me that I've talked about in the past is civil asset forfeiture, better understanding, like, how and when are people's assets being seized and how are they being disposed of? Is that something that's common in Malden? Is that something that's not common in Malden? I think that having a board like this that can look into the data is going to be really important. Again, would love to sponsor it and really in support, and thank you all for doing the hard work.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. I really want to say thank you to the community members that were a part of this group. Years ago, when the mayor asked me to pull together people from the community to get this Obama's pledge group going, I reached out to people, and people were recommended from then the police chief, Molis, but reached out to people that had lots of information, the knowledge, what we learned, what I learned since that day when I was asked to do this, and I was very clear that this is not something that is in my wheelhouse, but I was willing to take it on, and learned so much. But I really want to thank the community members. They're the ones who were on that call with us. They're not part of the City Council, they're volunteers, they're not being paid, they did such hard work and a lot of research. And so everybody that you named in the beginning, I want to, if they're watching tonight, really, really, the, all the appreciation and thought goes out to you. So thank you, and I support this moving forward. I think it's going to be great for our city.
Great. On our Counselor McDonald's motion to refer to ordinance, you know, rules and ordinance, seconded by Counselor Winslow, the clerk will call a roll, since we do have a. Counselor Winslow.
I seconded, yeah.
Yes.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seika.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President Crowe.
Yes. So it passes, so we look forward to that conversation, and I'm getting it going. All right, next order of business.
Paper eighty-two dash twenty-three, Communication, the Board of Registrazione Voters respectfully submits to the City Council the board's recommendation for papers necessary to the upcoming two thousand and twenty-three municipal election cycle, numbered as eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, and eighty-six of series two thousand and twenty-three.
So we took, usually communications a little further down in the agenda, but it made sense to have this communication up first, because the next couple of papers really around the elections, made sense to put them together, so it made a little more sense. So on, do I have a Counselor's motion to place, to receive and place the communication in file? Counselor McDonald's motion to place the communication on file, seconded by Counselor Seika. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seika.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President Crowe.
Yes. Next order of business.
Paper eighty-three dash twenty-three, ordered that the City Council designate the polling places for the entirety of the two thousand and twenty-three election cycle.
Did everybody get a chance to read where the polling places are? They're the same as they were for our last election, so those have not changed. So do I have a motion to accept? Do we want to do these all together, or do you want to do these separately?
Separately.
Separately. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the polling locations? On Counselor Seika's motion to approve the polling locations, paper eighty-three of twenty-three, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seika.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President Crowe.
Yes. Next order of business.
Paper eighty-four dash twenty-three, ordered that the mayor and the City Council hereby fix the dates and hours for the two thousand and twenty-three municipal election calendar.
Counselor O'Malley.
Now, thank you, and it's just minor. There's, if you click into the link, there's the election calendar, and if the wording changes, should we do that now? So like, for instance, I was wondering, we see, it says September thirteenth, first campaign finance due. Do you think it makes sense to clarify that's only if you are in a primary? Because you only file that campaign finance if you're in a primary? And, okay.
So September thirteenth.
So is that a motion to amend?
Amend the language on September thirteenth to read, five P.M., first campaign finance statement due for those candidates with a primary.
Okay.
Preliminary, preliminary.
Okay.
But actually, that's a good point. Does this change at all because we're, it's okay?
Do you still have to do the same reporting schedule even though it goes to them?
So do I have a second on that motion, on that amendment?
I'll make it.
All right, Counselor Cologne Hayes seconds that, that amendment to the election calendar? All right. Counselor McDonald.
Um, the election calendar lists July twenty-eighth as the last day to obtain nomination papers from the city clerk's office, but that is a Friday? Should that be June twenty-eighth?
No. Um, can't you open that day?
So, unfortunately for my staff.
Get a stay.
Our office hours of operation don't change state law, which means we actually have to either stay open on Friday or make other reasonable accommodations. So quite often you'll find our offices here working on Fridays and Saturdays throughout the election cycle, and that's the reason why.
Okay, so that July twentieth is a state deadline?
Yeah, cited by fifty-three.
Oh, I see. That's what, I see what that is.
Section nine eight. That's what that is. Yep, the citation.
Uh, okay, thank you. And then, is that the same with, like, so August first is a Tuesday, and City Hall's open until seven, right?
Five P.M. is the state deadline.
Five P.M. is the state deadline. Got it. Okay, well, thank you. Then I, that answers my question.
Counselor O'Malley.
That was a, I'm glad you brought that up, Counselor McDonald. We probably should do some serious, like, signage, because all of the things say City Hall's not open, so we really probably want to make sure that there's good signage downstairs.
It happened last year. It's happened last year.
Yeah, so still, I think, you know, and it, but it's good to know that, that Fridays are still like, a business day.
We do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we always do that.
Okay.
If there's some sort of accommodation being, so if we are here and we're doing business in the lobby so that we can see people open the door, if we choose to make another accommodation based on whatever is happening at the time, we put signs on the front and back door to let people know with a cell phone number of who to call.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. See nor the lights on Counselor O'Malley's motion to approve as amended, seconded by Counselor, oop. Okay, hang on. Counselor Linehan.
It says the final campaign statement is due in January of twenty-three. I think it needs to say twenty-four.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, I was zoning out. I didn't notice it till just now.
All right.
So two amendments.
So we have two amendments, so on Counselor Linehan's amendment, to actually change to the right date, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, and then on Counselor O'Malley's, clerk will call a roll.
Can we just take one vote on both of those things at the same time?
Yes, can't we just, we have those two amendments in this.
We need to take it separate.
Okay.
We're supposed to take the amendment votes separate.
Do we take both amendment votes at the same time?
Well, they're both, yeah, yeah, both amendments, yeah.
Well, it's just really two typos that not necessarily date changes.
They can be the same, that can be one.
So.
One vote for the amendment and then one vote for the paper.
Okay.
No, we didn't. We got a vote for that now.
On Counselor's, O'Malley's, um, motion to, to amend, to amend those two, please.
To amend the September thirteenth date and then the January twenty-four date. Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seika.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President Crowe.
Yes.
Okay, passed as amended.
Next order of business.
Paper eighty-five dash twenty-three, ordered that the City Council Councillor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President Crowe.
Yes.
Passed as amended.
Next order of business.
Paper eighty-five dash twenty-three ordered that the city council opt the city of Malden Inn to in-person early voting for the 2023 municipal election and to designate the city clerk's office, two fifteen Pleasant Street, room two-two-zero, as the central early voting polling location during the dates and times to be determined as voted on by the Board of Registars of Voters. And I have the dates that they are recommending, if you want me to read them.
Please.
So the dates would be the third and fourth week of October, so October twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, October thirty, thirty-one, November one, November second, during normal business, normal city hall business hours.
On councillor Spatafora's motion, oh, hang on. Councillor O'Malley would like to be added as a sponsor.
October twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, and then the following week, October thirty, thirty-one, November one, and two.
Councillor McDonald.
I probably asked this last year, but are we allowed to do weekend early voting? Or does it have to be only during city hall business hours?
We can do weekend early voting. What we've found with the municipal elections is that we're paying people to sit in the building with very low turnout. It makes it not really worth it at all. And in fact, last year, even though it was a state election.
Yeah.
And we would have expected a higher turnout, we actually ended up sending our poll workers home because they were like sitting here all day long and not waiting on anybody. So we find that it's easier to just do it during normal business hours with the added benefit of vote by mail being the trending upwards. It's kind of the way things are going. When early voting first came out, the weekend hours were important. People really liked it. But now with no excuse vote by mail, people don't care to come down to city hall to vote anymore. They'd rather just fill out the application, is our experience.
That, that's very helpful. That makes sense to me. And then do you know yet what the plans will be to give people, like, mail, mail them applications for vote by mail? Is that like...
So the state, in order, so the state vote by mail, no excuse vote by mail, is automatically will opted into it. You have the choice of opting out. I don't think that anybody here would want to opt out of that, which is why it's not a paper that the Board of Registars recommended. So with that being said, um, we, the election specialist, Dana Fajaro, my office, arranged this year for every census form to be sent a bilingual vote by mail application. So every single, not every single person right now, but every single household in the city right now has gotten a vote by mail application. Additionally, every day that we do our voter registration queue, we register new people, we change addresses. Anytime we have to send an acknowledgement letter to a new voter, an application for vote by mail is included in that acknowledgement letter as well. So we're sending quite literally thousands of these out. So is, it's going to be posted on the city website as soon as you guys approve all of this tonight and that kind of stuff. So it's an ample opportunity, I think, for everybody to get the application they need. Did that answer your question?
I, I think it did. I, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, come back to this at a future date. I really think it will be important, especially given the low turnout in municipal elections, to have an additional mailing closer, like, in the summer or closer to the fall that lays out these options and makes it very clear to people, since I just know how much people do not read the website and goodness knows that plenty of us try to stay as far away from Facebook as possible, but even when that's not. And so the, so yeah, I would just love to talk about that and see if, you know, something that's not too expensive, but I think that could be really helpful to just like clarify, because it's been changing. I, I often get questions from voters about like, what is it this year and what's going on? And so just to like, this is what the deal is this year, and here's how you can vote, I think would be very helpful.
Excellent, yep, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor O'Malley.
I do want to just thank our city clerk. I did get my census and I did have my vote by mail application in my census. So if you've gotten the city census...
Did you vote by mail, councillor?
Oh, I don't vote by mail, but I like to vote in person.
At least you got the option.
But I have the option. I like the feeling of voting in person, you know. I like seeing the number, where is the number at on the machine? But thank you for everything you do. I know it's going to be very smooth. Hopefully, we're going to get the, the numbers up this year. I've been talking about this kind of ad nauseam. I'd like to get the polls back with the banners. So I don't know if maybe we can partner on that. It would be great to get some polls installed. They used to be tied to trees. The trees died. Hopefully, we'll have trees again that we can tie them to in the future. But I think that's a great, simple way not to mimic our neighbor to the north. But they have those banners over Main Street, really low tech, and they work. So would love to partner, maybe partner with councillor Seega. I know that you have great network in terms of printing banners and stuff. It would be great to maybe work with you. You have good design. I think there's a way we could do that as a citywide effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see no the lights on councillor Linehan's motion to...
Hold on, councillor. Madam President.
Councillor Spatafora.
I had my hand up, so I didn't know if you wanted me to interrupt you. All right, the floor, I'm sorry.
Yes, you do, councillor.
So this is a question to Carol Anne. Carol Anne, uh, is the, is the only option, so you're going to, we're going to be opening up city hall for early voting, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
She said yes.
Yeah.
Is it, is there any, is there any chance of having a multiple locations? Not multiple teams, but maybe one time you move it to another location throughout the city?
We can talk about that. That would mean amendments.
I know it's logistics. I, I just think sometimes, you know, city hall is nice, but there might be some other areas in the city we might be to alternate to, just to give a little bit, um, better access to certain parts of the city that might not be as close to the square and our parking constraints and, you know, accessibility through, you know, bus lines and things like that. Just something to think about. I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot now because I know there's a cost. But maybe one of those days we could, we could potentially offer another location. I'm not making any suggestions where, but maybe another location for, for the early voting would be a good option for the, for the residents.
Councillor Spatafora, can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, good, okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if you could hear me. So, yes, we've talked about that before, and I think it's a good recommendation, not necessarily during a municipal year, because as you heard me say, it doesn't even make a lot of sense to have a staff in city hall running early voting, which is why we want to do it straight out of the office so we don't have to take on the expense of poll workers that aren't being put to work. Next year with the presidential election, I would say that this would be a much more feasible and worthwhile idea as far as return on investment.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, no, the lights on councillor Linehan's motion to adopt the order, seconded by councillor Winslow. Clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Cologne Hayes. Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor Seega.
Yes.
Councillor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President Crowe.
Yes. And our last one in this series.
Paper eighty-six dash twenty-three ordered that the city detail a minimum of one officer for each polling building to be determined by the city clerk and police chief.
Anybody have any, councillor O'Malley?
I would just move to approve. I think that the significance here is having it one per building versus one per polling place because we have a lot of co-located polling places. So having one per building makes a lot of sense. So I would move to approve.
Thank you. Before we do that, we have councillor McDonald.
Yeah, and just to clarify, like, we have a requirement that police officers be present. So this is, it's not a discretionary item for the council. We're just trying to, we're trying to clarify councillor O'Malley's point. So I, I'm willing to second that.
All right, on councillor O'Malley's motion to adopt the order, seconded by councillor McDonald, clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councillor Seega. Councillor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President Crowe.
Yes. All right, next order of business.
Paper eighty-seven dash twenty-three. Resolve that it is the sense of the city council that they wish to receive quarterly updates from the city solicitor's office on all pending litigation with the city of Malden via executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, meeting of public body in executive session.
Councillor Cologne Hayes for the paper.
Thank you. So this was brought about by our last council meeting when we were talking about executive session, and there was some, there was a general consensus, it seemed like, from the council that we would like to have more consistent updates. So I did write this, and I'd be open to timing. Like, I, I put receive quarterly, and I had asked the, the council president, she's not here right now, if she had a different idea about this. I definitely would be open to different timeframes. But hopefully, we'll all agree that having a scheduled executive session to be updated is a good idea. And that's probably basically pretty self-explanatory. Thank you.
Well, we have a couple of lights. So councillor O'Malley.
Um, I was, I was going to make an amendment if possible.
And he shut himself off.
That's the first. Um, that was the second. So if we could strike "they" and insert "it", and then strike "wish" and "wishes", and I was wondering, to what you were talking about councillor Cologne Hayes, maybe if before quarterly, right, at least quarterly, if it's more frequent, there are something that needs to be updated, that we need to be advised of, that could be helpful. So I would, I would move to amend by striking "they wish" and inserting "they, it wishes", and then inserting "at least" before the word "quarterly". But I would need a second.
All right, well, we have a couple of the lights, so let's see where it goes. Councillor Winslow.
Yeah, I did actually, um, had a meeting with the solicitor McNutt yesterday, and one of his suggestions was to see if we, this type of update in particular could happen on council the whole night. It's not clear under our rules whether that can happen. So, but, you know, for our attorneys, like, we have executive session. Ally's been sitting here all evening. It would be better if we could do that on council the whole night. So I don't know if that could be part of the, the resolution, that the updates be on council the whole night, if, if practicable or something like that, that... That, that would be my, I offer that amendment, so, yeah.
All right, so we have two amendments. One to change "they" to "it" and "wishes", and at least quarterly updates, preferably at the...
Preferably on council the whole night.
Preferably on the council. Council of the whole nights from the city solicitor's office on all pending litigations. All right? So councillor Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to articulate my support for this, and I had, I was tardy asking to co-sponsor this. I know Carol Anne said that in the system, and I appreciate it. I just wanted to express that out loud and to thank the sponsors for bringing this forward after we did have that discussion and doing the follow-up with our solicitor's office to kind of fine-tune it and get it to a place where it can be productive for both sides. So fully in support of this and the amendments. Although I will say, we usually do say "they, they wish", but I'm not going to be a grammarian. I don't know, I was just looking at the rest of the agenda. I don't think we say "it", but I'll support your amendment just to do you a solid.
You would be "they", not "it"?
I don't know, I think he's right, though, but I feel like for consistency's place, we, we usually say "they". That's probably a better way to put it. In any case, I'm in support of this, and I want to thank the sponsors for bringing it forward.
Well, just a pleasure, councillor O'Malley. No, the, so we're leaving "it" and "wishes"?
I, I think so.
We won't get hung up, hung up on that. So... Exactly. That it's the sense of the city council that "it wishes" to receive at least quarterly updates, preferably on council of the whole nights from the city solicitor's office on all pending litigation, etc. All right, on councillor O'Malley's motion to amend. Councillor, hang on, councillor McDonald.
I just wanted to be, asked to be added as a co-sponsor also. Thank you to have it.
Okay. And seconded by councillor Linehan.
On the motion to amend.
On the motion to amend.
Councillor Cologne Hayes. Councillor Linehan. Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley. Councillor Seega.
Yes.
Councillor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President Crowe.
Yes. Okay, on councillor Linehan's motion to adopt, pass as amended, seconded by councillor O'Malley. Clerk will call a roll.
Councillor Cologne Hayes. Councillor Linehan. Councillor McDonald. Councillor O'Malley. Councillor Seega. Councillor Spatafora.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow. Councillor President Crowe.
Yes.
Okay.
So the next order of business is an executive session for this evening, but I think we're going to take that out of order, take, put that at the end.
Okay.
Just...
Madam President, can I just ask a question?
Absolutely, councillor.
Uh, and I don't want to go back, but I just want to make sure that everybody, so, so on the previous paper, which was the polling with the police officers, councillor O'Malley just made a statement, and I, I, I just want to make sure everybody, because what I heard was councillor O'Malley said a minimum police officer per building, not polling location, correct?
Yes.
But that's not what that paper says. That paper says city details a minimum of one officer for each polling building to be determined by the city clerk and the police chief.
It says one officer for each polling building.
A minimum.
A minimum.
A, a minimum of one.
Correct, not a maximum.
It's not be a maximum, it's a minimum one, I...
Yeah, so there could be more than one.
It can be more than one if the, um, this, the city clerk and the police chief, chief deem it, that it needs, so at the Ferryway, for example, we have some polling locations downstairs. One sometimes is upstairs, so I would think that maybe they would decide to have two.
So when we...
Yeah, please.
So when we had sixteen polling locations, So when we had sixteen polling locations, it was easy for us to have a police officer in every precinct.
Yeah.
That's not the way the state law is written. The state law is actually written that you need one per building. Now that we have twenty-seven precincts, it makes it much more challenging to find three different rotating shifts of twenty-seven police officers. So we're going kind of more in line with the state law, just to make sure that we're covering ourselves on this. But obviously, if we have more details, Police Chief will make sure that those extra slots are filled accordingly. But again, Ferryway School is a great example. You've got one room with three precincts. You don't really need nine police officers all day long in that one cafeteria, when three will do. So that's why it says a minimum of one officer per building. We're always trying to get one per precinct, but we just don't, we just have too many precincts right now to promise that, so.
No, and I completely agree. I just wanted to make sure, because it doesn't say maximum. That's what threw me off. That's why.
It doesn't say maximum, you're right. It says minimum. Okay.
All right.
Doesn't say maximum. All right. All right. Next order of business, we're gonna move down to committee reports. We're gonna skip over going to executive session, so we can finish the docket at the end.
Paper ninety dash twenty-three, committee report. The standing committee on license to whom was referred Papers twenty-nine dash twenty-three and forty-three dash twenty-three. Having considered the same, make the following report that the petitions be recommended favorably.
On Counselor Seega's motion to receive the committee report, clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega. Counselor Spatafora.
I'm sorry, I want to mute. Yes.
Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Crowe.
Yes. Counselor Seega for the committee.
Thank you. I think it was last week, could have been the week before. The ordinance committee met to review these licenses. They're both renewals, and they were reported out favorably. So I motion to grant these two petitions.
So it's the two petitions. We've received the committee report, so did we read the, what the two petitions are?
Paper twenty-nine dash twenty-three, petition. Livery license for Roman Carm of one fifty Sylvan Street, renewal, three vehicles. Paper forty-three dash twenty-three, petition. Taxi cab license for Malden Trans Inc. of two ninety Eastern Avenue, renewal.
On Counselor Seega's motion to grant the petitions, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, clerk will call a roll. Yes, we're voting on twenty-nine of twenty-three and forty-three of twenty-three.
At the same time, got it. Thank you. Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Crowe.
Yes.
Paper ninety-one dash twenty-three, committee report. The standing committee on license to whom was referred Papers seventeen dash twenty-three. Having considered the same, make the following report that the petition be recommended unfavorably.
On Counselor Seega's motion to receive the committee report, clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Crowe.
Yes. Committee report is received. And then the petition?
Paper seventeen dash twenty-three, petition. Class-one license for absolute auto rental and sales DBA Scud Scud New England of four ninety-five Broadway, renewal.
On Counselor Seega's motion to deny this petition, seconded by...
Counsel Spatafora.
Counselor Spatafora. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Crowe.
Yes.
Paper ninety-two dash twenty-three. Committee report. The standing committee on license to whom was referred Paper thirty-one dash twenty-three. Having considered the same, make the following report that the petition be recommended favorably based on the stipulation that Mr. Colometta agrees to the payment plan as negotiated during the license committee meeting of February twenty-one in codified and treasurer Grover's written agreement delivered on February twenty-third to Mr. Colometta at twelve-thirty PM.
On Counsel Seega's motion to receive the committee report, seconded by Counsel Winslow, clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Counsel Spatafora, yes.
Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Crowe.
Yes. Committee report is received.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm sure Mr. Colometta fashion, he's still paying them right now. So I haven't, I've been trying to sit here and add everything up. I didn't realize last week in the committee, we just said to pay fifty-six hundred before tonight, but it's actually through Kelly Ryan, and they're all individual transactions. So I'm okay if you guys are okay to table this. It, I, I'll do whatever. I don't know if everything is, is paid up. So I think maybe we should table it for another week or so, just to make sure. I've been sitting here trying to figure everything with what he's emailing over and what the treasurer gave me earlier. That's outstanding, so I'm at a loss, so.
So on Counselor Seega's motion to table?
I'll second that.
Did you want to talk?
Oh, sorry. I can't.
Well, I said, "I'll do whatever." I thought you were gonna let her speak. I apologize.
Okay. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Oh, thank you. I was just going to say, thank you for the meeting last night. I know you worked really hard trying to figure out a way to get this passed. I do. And it was, I wanted to see, I don't like to see anyone in this city lose a license or not be able to continue work, so I'm glad that this was, you know, worked out, and I'm sorry that it looks like...
It looks like he's going in the right direction.
Okay, great.
Because I got all kinds of checkmarks that have been paid that haven't, you know what I mean? So, and like I said, they're still coming, so...
And this won't hurt his business? Like, we can just...
I don't necessar, at this point, I think, I don't think another week or two is gonna kill him.
Okay.
So...
That's great. I'm glad he's doing the work.
Yeah, it's definitely going in the right direction. I'm just not sure if it's there yet, and my head kind of hurts, because I'm trying to read the emails on my phone while I'm looking at this list to try to figure it out, so.
Okay. I'm good with that table. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So on Counselor Seega's motion to table, seconded by Counselor Spatafora, clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Counsel Spatafora, yes.
Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Crowe.
Yes.
Okay, paper is tabled. Now going back...
So besides executive session, the docket is clear, so...
Can I do one thing, please? I would like to take Paper two-eighty-seven dash twenty-two off the table.
Okay. On Counselor Seega's motion to take Paper two-eighty-seven of twenty-two off the table, if you'd like to, want to read the paper?
Paper two-eighty-seven dash twenty-two. Order that the city council discuss the disposition of property owned by the city identified as parcel number one-eight-five-five-seven-five five-oh-seven in the city of Malden assesses maps, also known as Lewis Cone Way, Robin Street. Such discussion to include a description of the parcel and its present use and possible alternatives for future use, care, custody, and control of the property, which will be maintained at the sole expense of the LSC, and that payments include the amount of any taxes that would otherwise be due to the city, as well as including whether or not to enter into a license agreement for business use of said property. Let's take it off the table first, and then she can...
You have to take, take up that one first. So Counselor Seega made motion to take it off the table. Counselor Winslow, seconded.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Counselor Spatafora, yes.
Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Crowe.
Yes. Counselor Seega for the paper.
Motion to withdraw.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Counselor, okay, we have a question. Counselor O'Malley?
Oh, sorry.
Do we know what the status is of the parcel? Is it, has it been paved?
No. They haven't done anything.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. On Counselor Seega's motion to withdraw, seconded by Counselor Spatafora, clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Counsel Spatafora, yes.
Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Crowe.
Yes. All right. Now we're returning back to Paper eighty-nine of twenty-three.
Paper eighty-nine dash twenty-three. Order that it is the city, that the city council meet with legal counsel in executive session in regard to Goleme versus Malden Police Department et al. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, as such discussion in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the city's litigating position, and to admit Maria Louise, Special Assistant to the Mayor, roll call required.
Okay. Citing Exemption Three of Mass. General Law, see... Yep. Okay. Again, Section twenty-one A, whereas discussing Paper eighty-nine of twenty-three in open meeting would be, have detrimental effects on the city's litigating position, do I have a motion to enter executive session? On Counselor O'Malley's motion to enter executive session, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega. Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Crowe.
Yes. So we will be entering executive session, but I want to give people the opportunity to have personal privilege right now. And so when we enter into executive session, we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn the meeting here, so when we can just adjourn from executive session instead of having to come back out here, seems a little redundant, you know, to come back out here and say we're adjourning. So we'll adjourn prior to entering executive session. So does everybody have Counsel Linehan for personal privilege?
Thank you. I have two quick things. First is, since during the Malden Reeds presentation, Porch Fest was mentioned, I wanted to just throw out a save the date. That is gonna be coming back this year on June tenth, and the first fundraiser to benefit Porch Fest is gonna be taking place on Thursday, March thirtieth, at One Ten Grill, so save the date for that. And then I also promised UMA that I would give a reminder that the State of the City is premiering on YouTube tomorrow at six PM. I also wanted to give a shout-out specifically to OSA Schwab and Elena Martinez, our Language Access Coordinator. When they communicated to the council that the State of the City was gonna be premiering online instead of in person this year, I wrote back and made a friendly suggestion that maybe we look into doing some kind of live interpretation or captioning or subtitles, since the digital format gives us an opportunity to do a little bit better on making it accessible to folks who speak languages in addition to English. And they stepped right up to the plate and put a plan of action in place. They are adding instructions. I actually, I'm trying to check, I think our Wi-Fi went down again, so I'm trying to like look on my phone here. If you go to urbanmediaarts.org, there's instructions for not only how to view the State of the City tomorrow, starting at six, on YouTube, but how to actually bring up multiple languages within YouTube while you're watching it, so you can add your own subtitles. And then in addition to that, Elena and OSA, and I'm sure many other folks behind the scenes at UMA, are going to be doing a little mini roadshow over the next couple of months to actually show the State of the City at different locations around the city with live interpreters there in a bunch of different languages, and hopefully with the mayor as well, so that folks can actually ask questions if they don't understand stuff that comes up or want to dig more into it. And thought it would be a great follow-up to the town hall that Counselor McDonald and so many others helped to plan that was so successful last month. So just, you know, we have some great people working for the city and volunteering, and wanted to give them a shout-out, because they really stepped up when I made a suggestion without any idea how to implement it. So kudos to them, and I'll definitely be watching it tomorrow night, and I hope so many of you in the community will join me.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you. I want to wish our South Asian community a happy holy, which is coming up on March eighth. I also was just checking the calendar, and daylight savings time is gonna be coming up soon, so congratulations to everyone for daylight. That's, no, this is the good one. I thought it was the opposite. I was like, I thought, for some reason, like, the daylight savings time is what we should always be, because this current stuff...
Spring forward.
We got longer days, like...
Right, congratulations.
So congratulations for daylight savings time. Maybe we can finally move to Atlantic Time, so we don't have to do this anymore. I highly propose that. I think Ed Markey's proposing that. I'm fully in support. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
I just wanted to say quickly about Porch Fest. I volun, as married to one of the organizers of Porch Fest, I volunteered to help corral the council support of Porch Fest. I think we'd like to have like a council location where we're sponsoring some stuff. So rather than having to have our, get individually asked for our support, let's try to just, you know, pitch in and help make it a successful event like that. So I just wanted to let you all know that, and I'll, and I'll be talking to the organizing committee about how best to do that. We're thinking like, you know, some kind of central location where we can, I don't know, give people snacks or something. So I'm gonna operate under the assumption that everyone would like to participate under that, and if you are not interested, let me know, but, but we'll keep you updated, which, if I have to talk to all of you, I have to do it in this way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. And thank you for that, taking that off the plate as one of the organizers for Porch Fest. Anything that people can help and want to jump in and do, that's awesome. From dates, as the last day, two of Black History Month, I want to say that we did pick the Juneteenth planning committee. It's up and ready. We've been meeting like three times already, believe it or not. And this year, we're going to have it on June seventeenth. Last year, we liked traditionally, for the past five years, we've done it on Juneteenth, but we realized it was Father's Day, and then this year, June nineteenth is a holiday, but we weren't sure what time people could get out, so we all decided that the seventeenth is Saturday would be better. It's going to be at Lincoln Commons again. Counselor Simonelli was in full support of that. And we've also brought in the committee that's working on the planning of this, which is great. We involved a lot of the interfaith organizations around, so very excited about this. It's gonna be even bigger and better, and mark your calendars. It's going to be from eleven to three. Thank you. Save the date, we're, I actually sent that out as a draft. It's probably going out tomorrow. You'll see it all over, hopefully, Facebook. Share away. The more we don't double-book things, the better, because I know that we also had, I think it was the, it was the Malden River Fest. They were going to have something on the same date, so we're really glad that we worked that out. So they'll be announcing theirs, they're going to do it, I think, because of Porch Fest, they had to back it up even earlier. So the good news is, we're all communicating on all these great events.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald.
I apologize, I forgot one other thing. Next Monday at six PM, the Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Commission is going to be meeting with staff from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, working on our climate action plan, to review their initial analysis of the city's greenhouse gas inventory, which means we're gonna be talking about how much Malden is contributing across all of our sources to the climate crisis, and that provides a foundation for what we can do to, to improve that and meet our state-required net-zero twenty-fifty targets. So I just, that's up on the, you know, on the Agenda Center, and I think the city's gonna be promoting that through social media, but it's a public meeting. There'll be a Zoom option to attend, and we'll also have an in-person option at City Hall. So if folks are interested in that topic, next Monday at six PM, the EESC will be digging deep into greenhouse gas science. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So the docket is now clear, so...
Madam President?
Oh, absolutely. Sorry, Counsel.
I will be very quick. I just want to thank, I know a couple of the council members, including myself, are playing on the disables list, but I heard about Counsel Condon's fall today. I just want to wish him a speedy recovery. I hope to see him soon. I heard it was a nasty fall, so hopefully he can get back to the council in a pretty quick recovery time.
Yes, thank you. We all want to send out our well wishes for speedy recovery to Counsel Condon, who had a trip in the fall and hurt himself today, so. All right. So on Counselor Seega's motion to adjourn, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega. Counselor Spatafora.
Counsel Spatafora, yes.
Counselor Winslow. Counsel President Crowe.
Yes. And we will now enter executive session, and we will adjourn directly from executive session.